Time comes.
Sure.
So I don't know that Monty's here. So Brian, you're voting as long as Monty's not here. Unless Monty can tell me you're here, but I don't see you on the on my. On here, so. Are we ready to go?
Yeah, it's it's ready for you. Go ahead.
Okay. Welcome to planning commission this May twentieth. This electronic meeting, May twentieth, it's about five thirty-three. We'll begin this meeting. Just once anyone is streaming or on here. You are welcome to submit your comments. For any public hearing. Via recorder washington city.org or washington city.org slash meetings. You can make your comments there in writing. They will be, and those are for any public hearing at this time. So please do that if you have that opportunity, if you have an issue, you can call four three five six five six six three oh eight. And we'll begin the meeting. I've asked Commissioner Musso to give us the invocation, followed by Commissioner Hanson will give us lead us in a pledge.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we humbly bow our heads before you this evening and give thee thanks for this opportunity we have to meet as a planning commission. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve the city of Washington and the and the citizens thereof. We'd ask you at this time to please bless our efforts in. In conducting the affairs of the city that we might be able to do so. In a manner which would be lawful and legal. And in a manner that will help and benefit the community as a whole. Again, we're grateful for this opportunity. We ask you to please bless those people who are sick and afflicted with this COVID nineteen that they might recover quickly. That our lives might be able to resume some sense of normality. Again, we give thanks for all that thou has given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Will you all please rise and join in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Musso and Commissioner Hanson. Item number one A is the approval of the agenda for May twentieth. If there are no changes, I'd look for a motion on that.
We'll move.
Second by Commissioner Musso.
Yeah, I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Musso. All in favor? I.
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 Any opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. The approval and two A is the approval of the minutes for May sixth. Has everyone had a chance to review those? And submitted any changes to Kathy? So I'd look for a motion on that if everyone's had a chance to review them.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for. Planning Commission meeting for May twentieth as stated.
Well, May sixth, it's the.
May sixth, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Musso and a second by Commissioner Fitzonfield. I forget I'm supposed to go through a roll call. So Commissioner Musso.
I.
Commissioner Fitzonfield.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Mr. Henry.
I.
And I as well as an I, so motion passes unanimously. We will, next item is item three with declarations of extensions or conflicts. Do we have any tonight? See none.
Actually, Jason, sorry, I was on mute. Item four A, I just live less than a mile from that planned development.
I also live less than a mile from that development.
Okay. So two items are, two commissioners are just stating they live by, but still you anticipate to vote on that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. With the with those conflicts stated. We will move to the discussion, the item four A. This is consideration recommendation of city council for Magnolia Grove Estates. File plot located approximately twenty-nine thirty, south twenty east, and the applicant is Michael Barr. We'll turn the time to staff.
Everybody have that map on their screens?
Yes.
Okay. Good. I will then go in. The applicant has stated is requesting approval of the final plat for Magnolia Grove Estates. This particular subdivision proposes five lots in an area of coverage of seven point two seven acres. The zoning at this location is the residential agricultural half acre minimum. Or reference in the zoning book is the RA half zoning district. The preliminary plot was approved back on November fourteenth of eighteen. Staffs reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Staff therefore recommends that the planning commission recommend approval for the final plat. Of the Magnolia Grove Estates subdivision onto the city council. And of course, that's with the findings and subject to the conditions, which are the standard five conditions for a final plat. With that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions the commission might have on the Magnolia Grove Estates.
Questions for staff?
I'm having a tough time reading it even on my iPad. The dark area next to the street, I assume is. Common area. So runoff collection basins. What is it?
Detention area.
Yeah, yeah, the one is detention. Easement, and then the one down below is a landscape easement.
Okay. Thought that's what I.
Yeah, go ahead.
On mine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for staff on on this? If not, I guess if the, I don't know if the applicants even on the phone, but if they have anything to add, I guess they can add. At this time. And if there's no additional comments, I guess I'll look for a motion on this.
I make a motion that we recommend approval to the city council with the conditions listed of. The final plat or Magnolia Grove Estates subdivision. Located at approximately twenty-nine thirty, south and twenty east.
I second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Fitzonfield. All in favor, Commissioner Henry?
I.
Commissioner Fitzonfield.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Musso.
I.
And Commissioner Smith is an I as well. Motion passes unanimously. Item. Five A is a public hearing. Now, this is scheduled for six o'clock. Correct, Drew? So we have to go to at least six o'clock?
Well, we're trying to just give people when to come in. I think the applicant. Was going to be online. Steve could let me know if they're still there or or not. And if they're there, then I think we just move forward with it. Because again, we'll see if anybody came in on it.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Steve said they're all trying to connect to Zoom and not Google. Okay, we have issues. Hopefully Kathy can hear that and give some people a call and where to go on. I'm just reading the message that they're all trying to come in on Zoom and that's not what they're supposed to do, but that might be what they got. So we're trying to get the message out to come in on Google chat. So hopefully Kathy's making a few phone calls.
For the applicants.
So all what we'll do is let me just go through my report. And then I may go through it again, but if not, maybe that'll give them time to get on through Google.
Okay.
We can chat about it and then have questions for them if you even need to talk to them, so.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Just want to remind anyone that's either watching it on. YouTube Live or. Has access to this that they can submit their comments. Via washingtoncity.org slash meetings. Or also email them to or you can email them to the recorder at washingtoncity.org. To make this. Public comment. So if you haven't done that, please do if you're available now.
Okay, as stated, the applicant is requesting approval of an amended final plat for the New Warm Springs Phase Four. Amended number two subdivision. The reason for the amended request is to eliminate the detention basin area. And that area is now turned into what we are calling lot number eighty. I've kind of boxed it out and read for you. To see that, I hope that's showing up on your screens. If not, let me know. The newly formed lot will be, as I stated, labeled lot eighty. Which was at the time a detention basin. But just for your history to tell you why you're thinking, well, why are we getting rid of detention basin? Well, directly to the west of this. The city with the help of Sitlo owning the land. Created a regional detention pond, one that needed to be built for the size of the water. In fact, a lot of you people wonder where all the floods were coming from years ago, and they thought it was because Brio was being built. In essence, it really wasn't. It was up above and to the to the east of Brio. And this wash that runs right along this boundary is where a lot of that water was coming from. And it washed out a lot of the road area up there, et cetera. So with help of Sitla again getting some land. And some other things, the city was able to develop and create and build. And it's not completely done yet. Brandon, I hope I'm speaking right. The major part of it's done, but more will be added. Is that correct?
That's correct. More will be added later.
Yeah, so right now, but there is a big enough one for the developments that are there. So in essence, it made this detention pond no longer necessary. They have a direct pipe. And it runs, and I'm going to change the color. And do that in blue. And there's a new sewer pipe that runs right through here. And takes the water. Is that right, Brandon?
Storm drain pipe.
Okay, and so that's been added, and so the detention pond was no longer needed. So the subdivision approached us asking if the lot could be a turn into a building lot. I said, sure, if you go through the process we're doing right now tonight. So in essence, that's what's behind this and driving this amendment is to change a unneeded, unnecessary, and unused detention basin into a buildable lot. For this new warm springs phase four development. Staffs reviewed the proposed amended final plat finds it conforms to the zoning. And the subdivision regulations. And so staff has no problem. We just want to again make sure that it is outlined as you see there and we'll have it. Recorded as such, that is still going to be a drainage easement. And we'll have to follow all those rules and regulations, not build on it, et cetera, just over where that pipe area is. So with that said, I'll glad to answer. Any questions? Steve, just let me know that Mr. Birm, who's representing the HOA. Is now joined into the meeting. So if you had any questions for him. He sounds like he's available as well. So anyway, so that's it. Planning commissioners, I'll be glad to help in any way I can.
Hi, this is this is Rob Brims with the HOA, just letting you know that I'm here. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have anything to add or you?
No, I think that Drew explained it pretty well. Do you have any questions of us?
Commission members, are there questions for staff or for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Hanson. Drew, I just have a quick question. The retention basin. That's being built by Sitla there that you said, is there any possibility that that would be? Outgrown at some point in the future with any future development that takes place over there?
Well, it we already know it is. It's like I explained earlier, this is just a portion of it, and I don't know what percentage it is, but. There's still a phase two that will be added on to that regional detention area. And if that's overgrown, then we'll have to go more to the north. You know, in Sitla land, and they'll have to account for that coming down. So future development will actually drive probably if it's necessary more detention to the north, the northeast.
Yeah. How long ago is this development built?
New Warm Springs, I think, took place somewhere in the early two thousands, the beginning of it, late, maybe nineteen nineties. I know that phase four has been in there. I've been here for fourteen years, and that's been there. Was there quite a few years before I started working, so I guess that it's a twenty year old plus.
That's correct.
I think I think about two thousand and one, or excuse me, yeah, about two thousand and one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If no other questions, I would entertain a. Well, I guess I, do we have any public comment, I guess, is the other question?
At this time, there isn't any public comment, but if after you guys close the public comment period, I'll let you know again. To make sure everyone else has.
Okay, I guess that is true. This is a public hearing. And so. So Drew, do I have? Do I have to go to six o'clock on this? Because that's how it was posted?
You know what? I hate to say it, but we might want to just do that. Let me look at something.
Can we move to the next item and just leave this open?
Well, it had a time on it as well, so. Probably don't want to do that. Then we're jumping way, way ahead. You guys are just so efficient, darn it.
Well.
And you're so good and smooth. But.
I'd be interested in the gentleman that's on the HOA board there that's representing the community. Maybe if he could tell us a little bit about his community. And why this would be helpful to have another home as opposed to something else. I'd be interested in hearing that.
So Robert.
Okay. Sure, thank you. Well, as Drew explained, this this has to do with phases three and four of the of the development here. For many years, we've had that detention pond, I guess, from the beginning. It was required. But now that it's been replaced with a much, much larger pond. We have followed the direction and we've gone and had the engineer. Indicate on in the plat that it would be lot eighty. It will make a great building lot. We know that the the easement needs to be respected, and it will be definitely marketed that way. And of course, the city will be enforcing that easement. That's not a problem because the lot is a little bit larger than the other lots adjacent. But it will make a nice completion of our subdivision to have a home on that. On that lot now instead of the detention pond.
So does the HOA, the HOA doesn't own this particular lot, does it?
Yes, yes, we do. The HOA does own that, and we've conducted a referendum. To get permission from the vast majority of the HOA members to to come to you with a proposal.
So the proceeds from the lot sale, then I'm assuming would just go to bolster your HOA funds for future needs?
That is correct. Those the the funds would be deposited into our HOA account.
Would it then lower your HOA fees?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Well, part of that money is going to pay for this amendment, just to throw that in for the commissioners to to know as well. So because they did have to hire the engineer, make the application fee, et cetera, so that some of that money will be indeed paying for that to to do as well.
We also had our fees for the for the city and those kinds of things. And then, of course, when. When it's developed, there will be the building impact fees and all that taking place as well. I think, Drew, at the legislature, this is when they go and they go and saunter. They walk around.
Yeah. Hey, Robert, I'm just going to ask real quick, did you have any opposition to any of your? To anybody in the subdivision that wasn't thrilled about this?
We didn't receive one hundred percent of our referendum ballots back. And we, but we got like ninety-eight percent, I think, by not having one of them back. Oh, well.
And was everybody for it?
We had, we had one individual that didn't check a box that they wanted to have us sell the piece of property. All the rest of them signed the or checked the box. And so. We feel like everybody's very much in favor of it. It'd be a great thing for us. We don't have the responsibility of the detention pond anymore, and. We'll be able to put a home there and make make things look better.
Yeah, the only reason I ask that commissioners and Robert is just the fact that if there was a, you know, I mean, we're waiting on this time. We'd be waiting for one person to contact us, it sounds like, because the rest of them are all okay with it. And that that person may or may not join in or make a comment. So I'll leave that with you, Chairman Smith. Chairperson Smith on that to see how you want to go with that, because I mean, again. This this goes to the city council following week, and they also have to hold. You know, a meeting on this as well. So.
Drew?
Yes.
This is Rob Brims again. There was a requirement in the plat, is it called plat amendment vacation?
Yes.
Where we had to have notification sent out to all of the members of our subdivision. And also to other entities that were within three hundred feet. I received my letter that that came out, and I haven't heard a thing about that, but was there any feedback that came back to the city regarding that mailing?
I'll I'll ask Kathy, they might have contacted her. Kathy, if you want to just unmute and just say if you received any emails or phone calls, did you?
No, there were no phone calls and no feedback on this.
Okay. Which is not surprising for a plat amendment, so.
Drew, I do have one question, and maybe Robert can answer this. This is Commissioner Hanson again. When I look at this from an aerial view. The house that sits on the corner of Arrowweed and Caddington, which would be on Drew's map there, would be the house that's on the left of your square?
Yes. Yes.
Their backyard, it looks like, was cut short in the development by maybe ten feet or so, and it's probably because of that detention pond. I'm curious if if the option's even there for that person to. Have the option to purchase or be extended that extra ten feet in their backyard so they could have it consistent with their neighbors. Let's see if you can see.
You know, you know, as I look one, as I look down the fence line on the north, all of those Arrowweed lots, I noticed that has like an indent. For the fence line. But I think the marker in the sidewalk indicates that the property line is straight, and so it just might be that. There's a portion there that that property owner hasn't developed. That that house right now is owned by the bank, and no one lives there.
Oh, okay.
And Commissioner Hanson, if I may, if you on your screen, I highlighted that property. Is that showing up? And it has a blue. You can see that that's actually, you know, their line, I mean, that fence you're looking at.
Yeah.
Is actually down below where my arrow is. But you can see the county line is up above it, so. You know, again, this might have been something that happened twenty plus years ago. They thought that might have went over there. And then when all was said and done, it didn't go that far. But this lot, this lot number eight down in this other subdivision actually owns up to this blue line.
So that that's actually legally there, they could build to that line?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. It just looked a little funny, and I thought I might as well ask, because I would have thought they built it that way because of that retention pond. For some reason, they needed that extra space.
And it might have been back in that day, but then when all was said and done. You know, the property line ended up right there. So.
Well, I wonder, well, okay. So the new person is going to know that, and they're not going to build on it, approach on it, or anything like that, would be my guess.
We sure hope so.
I can see.
Robert, I think Robert knows the person who's already looking this lot. Hopefully he'll pass that on to him to not make that mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. That person, that person's listening in, but he already knows that.
Okay.
Oh, we're almost there. It's five fifty-nine.
I guess the alternative would be maybe the person that wants to buy this lot or has interest in it could approach that homeowner and maybe buy that extra ten feet from there.
They could. They could do a lot line. Now, the problem is it it crosses over subdivision lines, but the county's been taking lot line adjustments, crossing over. Subdivision lines, borders, which I don't like, but that's my two cents.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm showing it's six o'clock, so at this time, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Musso. In favor, Commissioner Henry? Mr. Musso?
I.
Mr. Fitzonfield?
I.
Mr. Hanson?
I.
Mr. Smith, I. Public hearing's been closed. Has there been any comment?
Chairman Jason, there are no public comments on this item.
Okay. With that being noted. I would now. Enter to any further discussion or a motion for a recommendation of approval of the plat amendment. I guess a motion on the plat amendment.
So are you looking for a motion on this item?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval with the conditions listed. To the city council. Of a. Final plat approval for the New Warm Springs Phase Four Amendment Two subdivision located approximately eight forty-five. Corden. How do you say that? Corden, Corden Road? Caddington, Caddington Road?
So I have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Musso. All in favor, Commissioner Henry?
I.
Commissioner Musso?
I.
Commissioner Fitzonfield?
I.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Commissioner Smith, I, motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Smith, aye, motion passes unanimously. We will now move to item 6A. This is a zone change. This is a public hearing for consideration recommendation to city council. Uh, zone change request Z dash 20 dash 05 to change from PCD, the planned community development to PUD, planned unit development, located at approximately Countryway Road. And the applicant is Midland LLC. Um, just to remind everyone that is listening in or watching via YouTube Live, um, if you would like to make a public comment, please submit those to recorder at washingtoncity.org or, um, respond on the agenda, uh, washingtoncity.org slash meetings. And we will do that, um, until 6:20. There's the time listed on the agenda. So we will go at least to that time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Starkey. Um, question to Steve, I guess, and that is because of the last item, when there was some confusion, maybe in terms of the applicant having access to, to make comments, is there, and that someone may have been trying to get, get onto the Zoom, but wasn't, didn't have the correct invite? Is there a possibility that we have folks who are wanting to observe it per the public hearing, trying to go through Zoom, but they can't, but they can't get through to let us, to let us know that? And if so, can they even hear? So when the chairman says, when, when the chairman speaks and says, if you're trying to watch this, go to YouTube, would they even hear that if they were trying to access it by Zoom?
Um, the Zoom's not supposed to be public. I'm not sure how anybody got it. So we shouldn't depend on most people trying to come in through Zoom being.
That's my point. There is some confusion here, and all they're doing is just not getting into Zoom. Do they see anything? Would they be seeing video or anything?
Well, they could get on YouTube Live.
Yeah, YouTube is how we, we list it for the public. So.
No, no, I'm saying, I.
Everybody.
If someone were trying to get through and they had messed up already, they tried to get in Zoom, there's no way of contacting them through them seeing the video of it and just putting a sign that says, go to YouTube for live stream?
Uh, there's no way to do that. Technology, no.
And we're only, Jeff, we'd only be dealing with the applicant because they're the only one who would have got that misinformation.
Okay.
So now Steve, has the next person tried to contact you at all?
Somebody just joined before I started talking. Yeah, I'm here, Bob Hermanson.
Okay, there we go.
We have the next applicant.
Representative with us. Okay. I, I think it asked the mic anyway.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I will turn the time to you. I think I.
I didn't want to overspeak that or over, you know, so thank, thank you for clarifying that. Now I feel better. I'll move forward. The applicant has requested approval to change the zoning of approximately 33.07 acres. Uh, the request to change is from the current zoning of planned community development or PCD, which was originally going to be the Sunrise Development, which no, never came to fruition. Um, to a proposed planned unit development residential, single lot development standards. Uh, the PDR requested for the purpose of developing the 33.07 acres into single lot residential project. Uh, this is a request for the pod two of this area, just to refrain, uh, to bring you up to speed or bring back to your remembrance. This area was broken into five pods by the current owner who picked this up a couple of years back. Um, pod one's already been approved. Um, that was directly to the, the northwest up there. You can actually see parts of it all. I'll try to get my stick here drawing and, uh, pod one is over here. Where I've just scribbled in blue. This is pod two, the next phase in their development. And then there's still pods three, four, and five that will have to go through this process as well. Again, they got a general plan amendment to do PUDR. They were limited on 532 homes for the whole area. Um, and so this is that pod two, or just the second, um, again, development portion of this overall area coming to you tonight. Uh, this will mean again, that three, four, and five will go through this process as well, just at a future date. Um, pod two is proposing, uh, to you tonight, 113 dwelling units. Uh, this represents a 3.4 dwelling unit per acre density ratio. The proposed pod two is showing a patio home type of development, which consists of private owned building pads with common areas surrounding those building pads. This proposed design would fall under the planned unit development, single lot development. Uh, just to note during the general plan amendment, as I stated earlier, the full area was 202 acres. And again, limited to 532 total for all said and done. And, um, so again, that will be broken down in the remaining pods. The general plan land use designation uh, is medium density residential, which carries a 4.5 to 6 dwelling unit per acre density ratio. And the surrounding zoning to this parcel is R18 and county zoning to the west, RA1 and RA2 to the south, uh, which is across the river. Um, and open space to the west and north. Um, and again, there's that PUD piece that I scribbled out in the blue that's also adjoining this as well. Staffs reviewed the requested zone change wishes to point out that a park is being proposed by the developer found, and as you can see it, and I'm going to turn my color uh, to red and just kind of circulate the park, which is going to be a kind of a, a full amenity area for all five pods, just to reiterate that to those uh, commissioners, that this park is the amenity for again, to, to be calculated with all the pods and they're going to be building this. And so the park will come at different stages as each pod progresses. And it's also going to be a detention area as well, but you can see it's got soccer fields and a variety of different sizes within them. And so I just wanted to point out that park in, in the development. And then the, what's required in pod two is adding the public restrooms. And I'll kind of need to clear my, uh, thing here and I'll kind of find, oh, go to my mouse. And it kind of gives you, I think one of these, here we go. And I will zoom down in on that in pod one, which is the green area, that was required for the trail to be joined over. You can see, and then this much of the parking lot was required to be done. The blue color is now associated with pod two, which is the restrooms. Pods three and four will bring you more of the amenities, the rest of the parking, the pickleball courts, et cetera. And each one of these, you can see the phasing of the park will be required as well as they move forward. Uh, just wanted to point that out as part of this project. Um, let me come back up here and then I'll keep going to my report. Um, now staff also wanted to point out, uh, that a newer lift station will be installed. It's in conjunction with pod one that will give this area of the sewage that it needs, because of course this is an area that didn't have sewage and you can't fit that many septic tanks, uh, in that small of an area. Just take my word for it. The county wouldn't allow it anyway. Um, so again, the, the sewage lift station will be provided as well. And that will benefit other people on the other side of the river, uh, just for your information as well. Um, also staff would like to point out that we have concerns and the concern I have is with this application is with setbacks stated between buildings. The applicant is showing 10 foot separation. The code requires 15 foot separation. Uh, this should be discussed at this meeting tonight. Again, it wasn't specifically asked for in their application. Um, I kind of talked to the applicant a little bit about it, their representative. Uh, and he wanted to let me know, well, it's been passed in other PUDs that they've done, but I just don't want it to be that it's just something we, you know, because my code has a requirement in it. If they want to change the requirement, and I would like to recommend that they, if they're not going to ask for it each time, uh, think about maybe having the ordinance changed. Because if that's what they think is the common thing, just that it should be given, I just wanted to point that out. Again, I'm not trying to be mean or rude. I just wanted to point this out that, you know, again, it, it wasn't specifically asked for. It is in there and yes, we have passed some that have the 10 foot separation between them. Um, but again, I, I just felt that it should have been specifically asked for. And, um, that way it's not just a given, because again, my code says what it says. If it's a given, I'd like to change the code. Not just keep going through this and saying, well, you've given it to every other one. Let's just throw it in here. So um, that, that's probably the only concern I really had with pod two. Um, and the application, other than that, everything else, um, is, uh, looks fine and great and look like it would be a an addition to the area and to help that area grow out, uh, in that part of town. So with that said, it's still, with that said, I'd still like to, uh, point out that I recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 20 dash 05 for the zone change request from planned community development or PCD to the proposed planned unit development residential, which is the PUDR with the associated request for the residential single lot standards for pod two, and that would be on to the city council. And based on the findings and subject to the conditions. Um, now the big thing is we wanted to point out as with pod one, and I will point this out, uh, I'll zoom in. There is a 100 year flood line that you can see right here. It's this blue line that runs through. Hopefully you can see that on your screen. Um, I won't draw a blue line over the blue line with my drawer, but, uh, we just want to make sure that we won't be doing any subdividing, plating of that area until the LOMAR, um, has been completed and accepted by FEMA. And so that is one of the conditions that, uh, we would not entertain doing any subdivision until that's, or that would be part of a condition. Just wanted to point that out to the commissioners. Uh, that there is that 100 year flood plain running through, uh, that can more than likely be dealt with. Um, so that's my report. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commission might have uh, relating to this particular proposal.
I have a, uh, a question that you may be connected to. If they're saying 10 feet has been done before, where else was it done? I, I personally don't remember any coming through.
We did it on pod one. And then this same, this same, um, engineering firm did the, um, uh, the Heritage Cove PUD. Um, just out the back door, Commissioner Smith over there on that Nissen alfalfa field. They were the same engineering firm that designed that, that project. And there was some 10 foot ones done on those multifamily units in that. So does that help you, Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, that helps. I, I, I couldn't remember. I seemed like we had talked about it, but it, I think we need to ask them to request that 10 foot space rather than just assuming they're going to have it. This particular engineering firm, uh, kind of tries to be bullies, I think. And I would request that they request that of us. Let us make the decision, not them. And with that in mind, I don't know if I could vote for, uh, approval to the city council without that information.
If I remember correctly, Heritage Cove, the other place we're talking about, that we, we, uh, requested denial for that. And more than once, you know, I know it was passed by city council. Well, one of my questions, Drew, was the code is 15 feet, probably for a very good reason. Do you, is it a safety? Is it a fire thing? Do you know why 15 feet's the number?
Well, I think that one, we, we just, you know, we rewrote the PUD here in the last year and a half. Um, and I, I just transferred that one over because again, I didn't get a lot of kickback. You know, when it was in the original PUD, um, from it. So now again, usually when they're cutting those corners, because they're trying to raise, get higher density. And I'm, again, I don't want to pick on them and beat them up. Because I will tell you that the 3.4 dwelling is per acre is not a high density by any means, you know, so, um, and it's just, you know, with this particular lay on this land, and they do have some bigger areas, but again, I just don't want it, you know, us making the, the assumption that it's just a given, I guess. Um, I, you know, I don't know if the city minds from time to time because there might be issues that that helps. But that's just what, you know, one of the things that just kind of caught me a little bit. Um, you know, on it. So, and, and again, is there, I mean, 10 foot, you know, Commissioner, to get down to the boil of your question, is, is generally it's a 10 foot mark. We don't like to, to go beyond, you know, and that is because that's always been kind of one of those fire lines. We always, you know, talk about like even with our detailed accessory structures on lots, just keeping something 10 feet away, because that was the old rule of thumb. You know, just because of fire codes back in the day and a lot of cities have just held on to that one. So, hope that answers your question in a roundabout way.
I think that the 15 foot has been, has been in place because they've always maintained, uh, seven and a half on both sides for utilities. And, and so it's always maintained that 15 feet. Um,
And that's when you have the property lying, running down the middle of that, if I may add on that.
That kind of is how, how it's been in the past. I think it's just been carried over. I, I think that there are some, um, there could be some mitigating with, with fire. Uh, you might have to build, you might have to have a different type of, depending on the height of the building. I don't know if seagulls stories, but sometimes two story buildings, um, if they're so close, they have to have, they have to have a different type of in the building side of it. Um.
Yeah. And see with, with this zoning, we're not asking them to give us what their things are. So I don't know if they have plans to do two stories and mingled in or not. You know, if it is single story, I don't have as much burn. But if it is two story units, you know, even if it's next to a single story that we always, you know, every code kind of pushes them a little farther apart when you have two stories. So.
And even with the spaces, uh, at 10 feet between the houses, it's still not, let me, this is a clarifying question. Overall, they're still under, are planning on being under the 532 homes in the total development. This isn't allowing them to go over that, is it?
Oh, no. No, this one, yeah, even if we put them two foot apart or 20 foot apart, it's 532, however they design it out. 532 dwelling units. You know, they could do that in four plexes, single family, six plexes. Uh, you'll see, because you're going to start to see the multifamily stuff that gets closer to the industrial area, which is wise to do. Um, and you're going to see, you know, more of the four and five and six plex townhomes, um, coming on the next couple pods. Uh, just because that's where the higher densities are going to raise up to meet those. And again, and it's justified because they're going to be closer to the, the, closer to the, um, the dump, the landfill, as well as the industrial zoning.
Yeah. For me, in my opinion, if the code is 15 feet, I think we should adhere to 15 feet, just for me.
So, oh, excuse me, I have a question though, really quick. So the outlined area is, is that the building, that's the building pad, I'm assuming?
Correct. See, and that's the unknown. I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Commissioner Musso, because the houses could sit on the private ownership a little less. I mean, they really could if they, or they could build actually to the farthest black line, or they could actually come in a little bit. That's the private ownership, that purple area. At times, glad you pointed that out.
Well, and the other thing, it's nice is that these are going to be single family, individual dwellings as opposed to more townhomes. So, I mean, you know, if this, if this was a townhome project, we wouldn't be arguing about 10 feet in between the houses. You'd have four of them stuck together. So I, I see the 10 foot in between as kind of a, it's kind of a moot, not a moot point, but it's, I mean, I, I look at it as it's a bonus that we're getting single family houses as opposed to, as opposed to how, townhomes. The other question I had, though, I thought in reading this, Drew, the proposal that the park, soon as they hit 50% of being completed, that the whole park was supposed to be done. Is that, did I read something there wrong or was that, I mean, what, where do they anticipate having the park done? Is it after phase two or is it after phase three?
Let me, let me try to find that one and.
I thought I, I thought I read that someplace.
It was, the way it was posed when they cut it, is the park had to be complete at the end of 50% of the homes, if I remember it correctly.
See, that's, that's what I'm remembering.
Well, actually what we did is, is this box right here, I zoomed in on it, the pod phasing.
Yeah.
Um, it was actually talked about and we did break it down a little bit. And that's why, you know, again, we talked about what was due in each phase, each pod phase. And that's kind of what this is. And that's kind of what this is following. That's why they showed you in phase one, the parking lot trail had to be done. Phase two, the bathrooms had to be completed, and then phase three will be the complete park and pond completed at fifty percent of the total, yeah, that's right there. In fact, what you read is is right there. It's even supplied by the, so.
So that'll be after phase three is complete, that the whole park will be done?
Yeah, because I think I think this still keeps them just under half, half of it. So when they come to phase three, that's the rest of it will be done. And then you can see part of the soccer field area, you know, in this pond phasing, what will be. And that's fall in line with what you read exactly.
So their pond is also a fill, so it's like a it's a depressed grassy area is what, and it'll function as detention basin?
Yeah, just like Treasure Valley Park is a detention basin. If you go up to Brandon, help me with that new park up there that Shooting Star. Shooting Star is a detention park as well, designed that way. It's suppressed, and this one will be pretty much the same.
But the detention phase will be completed.
As as the phases.
Yeah, as the shading you see here, yeah.
As as the phases build, it'll
But it'll function as detention basin immediately, correct? Once they grade it, they they're going to have to have some sort of detention.
Correct.
To take, you're right, to take the water in for each pod.
They just won't build it out and complete it as landscaping until till it's required.
How big is the park? Can we know approximately?
Bob, are you on there?
Yes, sir. Yep, I sure am. Just quickly on the on the park side, it is, I think it's just over five acres, if I remember correctly. I don't have it on this map, but it is, it is at least five acres. It's it's substantial.
And then is is it going to be dedicated to the city at the time of completion?
It will be. It's not in the capital facilities plan, so there's no credits applied to it or anything like that, but it but the intent, yes, is it will be I'm sorry.
Sorry, that that your intent is that the city will maintain it after it's completed, I guess.
Correct, yeah, at at once it's fully fully built and finished, that that's correct.
Okay, and then Drew, you spoke that saying that this is, this is the amenity that there still is a trail that goes through there, and there still is open space in the other pods, correct?
Correct, there's still open space for each pod, but this is the amenity that we wanted them to put in. So they decided, hey, we have to have a detention pond, and they they're the ones who built the Shooting Star one as well. You know, at the beginning, it was the same developer, but now it's been sold to someone else, but still the same designers are doing the project. And so that's what they want to do is just so that we'll end up maintaining it. We'll have to accept it, of course. It's just they won't get credits because it's not part of our capitals facility plan, but they still do have area that's been designated meeting that twenty percent within the pot itself, that I'll try to get up here and and find for you. You can kind of see it in here. Let me get my drawing pencil, but we have areas that have been set aside on this this corner. And of course, here, you know, and then down in this area. Sorry, I got to now go back to my mouse so I can slide, but then you have this area here as well, an area in between. So there's there's different areas that they have that are open space. You know, filled that meet that 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 minimum.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we have proper social distancing so that we can have, we can have you know, some smaller areas, and that isn't just the only place that we congregate in this, you know, as as you get to some of those townhomes and things, I I hope there is some decent park, maybe not this size, but some
Pocket, pocket areas, right?
And I, 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 I'm assuming there are, I just, because it appears that they've got that in in throughout the even in this pod, they have it to some additional areas, so. That would be my concern, and as long as we have the the lower portion of this is also.
I think, I know that I'm kind of laughing at that comment, Jason, but that proves my point about the ten feet. You wouldn't even be able to social distance, quote unquote, in your own backyard or property because it's so close to the next one. If you have five feet and they have five feet, I mean, that's how close it is to me. That's again, I laugh at your comment, but that proves my point. Ten feet is not very far away, especially between single family residences.
You're correct, and and I can see both your point and I can see Commissioner Musso's point that, you know, it's not a it's a step above a a townhome for someone that, you know, that's starting out or or and so I I can see both points and and I agree with both of them, so I'm not, I'm not
That's what I'm saying. I wish I knew exactly why fifteen feet is fifteen feet. If it should be ten, then let's make it ten on the code, and we don't have to make the decision or make the recommendation. It's just there, but, yeah.
We need to look at other items as well. If there happened to be a fire in number eighty one, for example, and they have to end up fading it, part of from the street on eighty eight side, ten feet's not a lot of room to work if houses on fire. And I think that's reasons that we had fifteen feet originally was part of it was for access in emergency situation, and I can't see that in ten feet. Kind of tight in fifteen, actually.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Starkey. I can tell you where the fifteen feet between came from because I used to question that when I first started reviewing flats, you know, a decade or two ago, and that was seven and a half feet on both sides. At the time, we used to run all utilities, potentially all utilities. We needed seven and a half feet fifteen feet because we assumed we needed that much room to just get even for water lines or those things to get equipment down if we needed to, and Brandon may recall that. It was, it was just a standard we used to have. Nowadays, we don't really use those as our standard easement lines, even in the backyards, but that's where the fifteen feet came from, and it and it was it was a standard for decades and probably still is right now, but I don't think from any code.
They they still use the seven and a half foot on all the flats too, that you're familiar with, Jason.
Yeah, for your for your standard, for your standard ten thousand square foot, you know, R one ten or or that's not a P U D, you you typically still have the seven and a half feet and and on both sides of the property line.
And I was told that's what you needed to get equipment down to work, just just construction equipment to work on underground utilities.
Well, yes, some of these utility guys, and they need like thirty feet, so I don't know. Maybe they don't own equipment as well, so I don't know.
Hey, and and Drew, just a question, so we don't, because I can see how this might be at least an issue that raises later on, and that is the dedication period of time for each of so each of the improvements we're talking about with with the bathrooms, with the parking lot, with the pond, a retention pond. So so if those are public dedic, those are public improvements, so the question I have is, for example, in phase three, complete park and pond completed at fifty percent of total units. As I recall the discussion we had initially, that was before we would issue more than fifty percent of the certificates of occupancy, they had to have them completed. So I'm anticipating that there's going to be a separate dedication plat for these public improvements because I I unless it's just coincidental that the pond is exactly completed at the time when one of the subdivisions in which they can just include the entire park in it, those will probably have to be by separate dedications, dedication flats for each of those three improvements. So that's a question for Drew and for Brandon, I think.
No, and you're absolutely correct. I mean, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept them if it came on pods three, four, or five because there's a separation gap. If they're going to include it in the plating, it would have to be with Pod one, which has already been platted. Pod two could take that, but I don't think that's their intent right now, so it will be a a separate dedication, you know, of itself at a future date. And again, after, again, Barry's going to have to accept it. You know, because we've had other people who built parks, but they didn't build it to the standard, and we haven't accepted them. And so I hope that, you know, the applicant has been working with Barry, at least they, and I think they know that because they've already built one park that Barry did accept. And I hope they follow that same pattern and build it that that same direction, because again, we do have a park out there in a different development that they want to give the city, but they weren't going to build it. They didn't want to put the public restrooms in or put concrete path around. So to this day, we've never accepted that park, and that development pays for that park, you know, in their own H O A fees, so.
And in this particular case, they could be stopped from selling lots out there. They wouldn't get C O's to be able to sell lots if they hit that fifty percent level, for example, until the dedication plat came in, which means that again, Barry would have to approve it, Brandon would have to approve it. So I just don't want there to be any confusion at that point that we're holding up any sales, and that'll be anticipated. So Bob, just as a heads up.
Well, Jeff, I, you know, to be honest with you, I I don't have issue. If they if they don't want to give it to us, we we're not going to maintain it, but it still counts as their amenity. I'm fine. They don't have to dedicate it to us. But those things have to be in place, you know, for them. Does that make sense? Because I just want to clarify what you said. Because, you know, they, it's going to be beneficial for them to give it to us to maintain it from the years ahead. You know, other than that, as long as they had the amenity there and everything was built like they planned on here. I I'm I'm probably fine if they didn't give it to us, you know, at that point, but at a later date. But it's only going to benefit them to give it to us at some time just because of the maintenance, maintenance factor on it on the years to come.
Sure, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of whether or not those are public improvements, or they're going to be project improvements that will be maintained. But for example, the trail, I'm, the assumption is that trail is a part of our trail system. We just don't want that to come to the end or hit some pinch point with any of these things and then have the issue raised. So anyway, just bear those, all those things in mind, including for Bob, as he's talked with his clients.
Yes.
I I I appreciate that that update and and I don't know if you have any any additional questions for me, but but if it's okay, maybe I could try to go through a couple of these, if if that if that works timing wise, or whenever you'd like me to to go forward, just let me know.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob, and we'll, and then we'll probably make sure, make sure if we have any public comment, we might still need you to comment on that, but but let's answer some of these questions and and concerns that the commission has and and staff has brought up and and see where we're at at that point.
Okay, so I appreciate everyone's time. Just right off the bat, just very, very sincere apology on on my end and my my company's end to saying that anything that was misrepresented on our end, I will, I will fix immediately. Absolutely not intending and and thinking that for sure, we we are guaranteed any any item specifically this request for the ten foot setback. I I do apologize specifically to Drew for not specifically addressing it in the documents that we've submitted and and making that very clear that it was it was a request. We we are not anticipating or or believing that it's that it's granted. Yes, it has been done in other projects, but fully aware of the code and fully aware that you and the city council together, you know, make those decisions and recommendations and just right off the bat, just want to just sincerely apologize for any misrepresentation that's gone on there. And and telling you, giving me my word that that we will resolve that immediately and make sure this and any other project moving forward, that that's the way it's handled. And just just wanted to to say that right off the bat. Just very, very sorry for that. As far as the actual setbacks, the the reason that we were looking at that setback, the ten foot setback in between the pads, it's not between all of them, but but the majority of them, yes, that that is the case. And the reason that we were doing that, it was just because of the, these footprints are are a little bit larger, as you can see, sixty five by seventy five. So these are a little bit larger footprints, the buildable area there. These are based on the maximum size of the potential builders that have been negotiating with the with the owner on on looking at this pod and and starting to do to you know, potentially build homes here. In all cases, they they would be, the question earlier was, would they be one level or two levels? In in all situations, I'm going to say there's going to be a mix for sure of one story and and two level. I'm sorry, and two uh two story options. And so the the reason, though, on on this is just compared to some of the other stuff that we've done. For example, Pod one, these pads are about fifteen feet larger in both directions than any of the pads in Pod one. These are in currently in Pod two, what we have is they're roughly about mid sixties in width and seventy five feet wide. Across the way, they're they're fifteen feet in both directions, smaller, so meaning fifty by fifty roughly in that in that arena. Or fifty by sixty, sorry. And then the as far as the access and not having any utilities, I know you've already discussed it, but but that is one of the reasons is that we don't have any utilities that are going down in between of those buildings. In this case, where we're we're designing and developing all of this space, we we know what's going on there. So that's one item. Fire code, and I'm sorry, maybe I'm not sure who's on the line, if if fire's on the line here, maybe Brandon can answer this question. Is that the, if I recall correctly, is fire code is six feet? Not that that's, like, we're not approaching that, right? We're we are less than fifteen. We are at ten. But my understanding, if I, without pulling the code up in front of me right now, is that it is six before you have to do firewall protection, actually in the walls themselves and the buildings. We're anticipating these pads, again, being, that being said, is that they are the maximum size for the maximum size could be built, that in a lot of these cases, the the footprints that are available aren't going to be the entire home. I know you can't guarantee that. I know it's possible. But that's the anticipation so that the, there will be a minimum of ten feet, ten feet, but we are, we are anticipating there to be more than that. In addition to that, the last item that I'd like to like to bring up is that the this is, this is, this is regarding the ten feet, is that the linear park along Road A that Drew pointed out earlier, which is, and I'm sorry, there's a pretty big delay on on YouTube versus the phone. And so, but along Road A, if you if you see that between lot fifty seven and forty seven, that open space, we we did leave that open intentionally, trying to connect my overall plan here between all of the pod is is to connect them with a with a trail system, so the amenity in the in the open spaces that were that were brought up earlier in these future pods, is you guys are exactly right, as we are connecting those those open spaces with with trails and these linear parks to try to link all of these areas together so that not only do they have access to the the main amenity, which is this larger park down by the river, and then the Washington City's trail system, but they also have some elbow room getting down there and actually some usable space through these pods. Specifically, I'm talking of Pod two and three. And so the other side of that is that our density is is lower than than we, the current entitlement shows that it is. Obviously, we 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 are fully intending in all in in the in the pods to hit the five hundred and thirty two total units as we work to the north, just as Drew's described. As and we've all talked about in the future, our past approvals, is that our Um, as, and we've all talked about in the future, our, our past approvals, is that our densities are going up, right? We are going to go to an attached product townhomes as we move into pod three and, and into those areas. But the thought was just to have those bigger open areas and those linear parks just to, to, to give more, um, more play area and more elbow room, so to speak, in those trail system areas. Um, we could still maintain the same density that we have in here and, and meet the other open space requirements by merely just, you know, adding some lots into that space. And it, it was just my e- example of having a linear park that was actually usable is why I chose to open that area up. Um, and so, um, but what came with that was, you know, a smaller, one of the reasons was the smaller space in between those potential pads of 10 feet. And so, um, sorry for not formally requesting, uh, again, the the deviation from the 15 to the 10s. Um, but those are some of the reasons why it's laid out the way that it is. Um, and, and we are, um, everything else that was talked about, I think that we were, we were all aware of in, in the, in the park and going through that phasing, just like that, that's been relayed and Drew did a great job as usual of um, lifting our process and what we, we have all already agreed on. We are still holding the, holding uh, steady to that and, and are not questioning that or asking for anything else as far as that goes. Uh, I think that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
See, can I, can I chime in a little bit?
You bet.
The 65 feet is a, a real, for, for these types of townhomes that they're, they will be building, that's, you're still going to have probably in excess of 10 to 15 feet from the, from the house size. I just got done looking at a house before I joined on that had a, a huge RV garage plus a two-car garage plus then an extra 30 feet of house on the frontage, and it fell within 63 feet. Um, and I don't think anybody's going to build a 60-foot long, 17-foot wide RV garage on any of these things. So I think, you know, granted, like he was saying, we only have 10 feet in between it, but you're building pads, they're not going to utilize, or I would be surprised if they utilize the full 63 to 65 feet in width that, that's allotted. It's just this, that's not the type of product that they'll be selling in this, in this development that I would assume. So just for, for what it's worth from my perspective.
Thanks, Commissioner Musso. Um, this is a public hearing, so, um, and we were going to at least 6:20, it's now 6:45. So uh, I would actually look for a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Have we had any public come in through the system?
We'll find out in a second. After you close the hearing.
Now, once we close it, then we'll talk, we'll ask Denise if she, if she has anything.
I'd make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Fitzomfo to close the public hearing. Uh, in favor, Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Fitzomfo.
Aye.
Mr. Musso.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, do we have any, did we have any public comments?
Chairman Smith, this is Denise, city recorder. There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, so no public comments. So uh, further discussion with with uh, the commission or any other questions for as uh, the applicant has, has described his, his point on the 10-foot easement and some of the other items that we've, we've gone over. Um.
Jason, I have one, one other question.
Yeah.
It shows that you have the Rio Virgin subdivision that's unrecorded and it's kind of stuffed in between pods two and three. Um, it's easy to look at the, the last chart that they had, the very bottom chart. But who owns that particular subdivision? Or is that, is that buildable space? Is it usable? But it's just a question for, I mean, is this something that's going to end up being future utilization at some point?
Well, I'll chime in and I'll let Brandon also chime in. Um, wh- wh- the reason we put this on here, because it, it's, it's, somebody went and made a subdivision, but didn't go through the city years ago. This is, did, you know, it's happened, it's been out there since I've worked here. Um, but it's, so we really wouldn't ex, uh, award any building permits because we don't recognize it as a subdivision, even though at the county, it's recorded, but you know how that goes as an appraiser. Doesn't mean that it made it through the proper channel. So that's a yet to be determined kind of question. Uh, what's going to happen there? But right now, if someone were to walk in our door and ask for a permit, I'd probably say, well, go ahead and, you know, get your subdivision recorded the right way, and then we'll look at giving you a building permit. It's kind of how that would work.
Have to, they'd have to provide all the improvements and
movements and everything.
At any other subdivision.
Right, and that's understandable. I guess does the
There's several owners.
Oh, okay. So it's not the same owner?
No.
As this subdivision. Okay, and then
Not the same developer. It's, there's, Brandon, what is there, four or five folks out there that own multiple lots?
I think there's more than that. There's, there's several out through there that I've looked at.
Oh, so this sounds like it's an old Dixie Springs fiasco type of a deal.
A- amen.
Okay. And then the other question I had is that there's a ton of ground that's to the south of pod two that goes on either side of the river. Um, all that ground down there. And, and I, and I understand, I mean, that's all just, it's meanderland, basically. I mean, there's sand and, and all that stuff. Are they including that as part of their open space?
No.
Okay, okay. Those are the only questions I have.
I, I need to answer that correctly. Yes, they own it, it could be, but it's not being calculated. You know, or used i- in a, in appropriate way.
So it's not, it's not like the hill over there at Heritage Fields that nobody can go up and down as part of their open space?
No, this is, like I say, right here is the, the biggest reason for that. It's got that bank, that armory bank right there as part of that uh, thing that was brought in and done by the county and folks. And so down here is kind of, you don't want to be doing anything down here.
Other than the fact that kids are playing down in there now. I mean, they're, they're using it as a beach, which is, which is great for the river.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So, um, I guess, I guess I understand that Chief Evans is on here, and I know that, that Commissioner Henry had questions about safety and concerns with the 10-foot, 10-foot easement. And if, if he wants to address that, that'd be great. If he doesn't, I've guess I can say that he doesn't have to say something. I'd prefer if he said something, if he had any concerns or if he sees any concerns with it. Is he on?
How about that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Awesome. I'd be happy to answer it. Uh, he is absolutely 100% correct on the uh, the rule i- as far as it goes. It's actually listed in the building code as well. Uh, which, uh, so if you go under that space, uh, so 10 feet, uh, doesn't have that requirement. Um, but, uh, so they are allowed by the code to build closer than that. Uh, when they get under that, uh, that six-foot mark, they, uh, they just have to, they can still do it. Um, it just requires it to be non-combustible, uh, and that would include windows the whole month, uh, the, the whole bit, but uh, so the code would allow them to build closer. Um, it does, of course, uh, present problems. Um, 10 feet apart, though, even 15 feet, i- it's still uh, can surely get from, from one structure to another, uh, i- as far as fire goes, but um, but yes, the code does, uh, does allow, and 10 feet, uh, doesn't have a special requirement.
Okay. So, so uh, as far as building codes and as far as fires concerned, um, 10 feet isn't, isn't part of the code, it's just part of the, it's just a Washington City code, which I think we've kind of answered, why, why 15 feet is just kind of been in there. Um, so I guess those, I don't know if that helps you, Commissioner Henry, or, or if you
Uh, I'm very appreciative of him coming in and making the comments he's done, and I thank you.
Well, good. Um, further discussion, um, I guess I'm, I'm going to make one more comment on, on setbacks, just because it's, it's looking me in the eye and and so I, and I don't know if I have a major concern about it, but um, we are showing a 20-foot setback on all frontages, but it appears that we have when the frontage is on the side portion of the home, we're going down to 15 feet. Um, and I don't, I just want to make sure that I think that's kind of the same, the same alignment with the, the 10-foot. I, I believe you still have to have 20 feet unless you request it specifically and, and maybe that's something that I could have Bob just address in a depending on how this moves forward, if, how the commission moves forward, if we, if we want to have him submit it formally to us, or if we're okay. Um, depending on which way it goes, to submit it to the council or um, formally requesting that, I'd probably just add that to it. Um, staff have any questions about that or concerns or?
No, you, you, you pretty much understood that one that I, that I, you know, I did catch while that I forgot to add that in my discussion. So I'm glad you, you saw that too, so.
So Bob, do you kind of under, do you understand that? I mean, and I think if, I think I'm with uh, Chief Evans and, and everything, I think, and an understanding that this is a pad and it's probably 10 feet's the minimum it can be, but in a lot of cases, it's going to be a little bit larger. Um, I would just like to see a formal request and um, at least to counsel in the form of a letter or something before it was heard there, or if, if other commissioners want to see the formal request, um, they might want to table it and, and have you do it that way. I'm not sure if we, if we've answered the question sufficiently for everyone or not, um, but does that make sense, Bob? Are you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no problem. Happy to, happy to pro- provide a, a written request. Um, no question, very specifically for those items and, and, and send it over to you as it moves through. No, no problem. Yeah, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, thanks.
So what I'm hearing, Commissioner, Chairman, is that he will have this information available to go to city council and we'll pass it on. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that either way. I'm saying, I'm saying that's an option. I'm saying you can, you can uh, you can request that, that, you know, table that and get that information formally yourself. Um, or you can, I mean, you, you still have all your options open. I'm just saying, those are kind of some options that I see that are available, depending on how comfortable you feel on moving forward with this, or if you want to to uh, continue to review it and make sure that, and look at their, their formal submittal, their formal proposal on, on the 10-foot and the the 15-foot setback. I don't think I'm suggesting it either way, I guess. I'm just, I'm just saying that's, that's what I would, that would be the minimum that I'd request is someone is having a formal proposal. Further discussion, motion?
Uh, I'm, I'm not quite sure where I'm going, but hear me out. If we, we added another a condition, that that be provided to the city council before approval on their part, how would the rest of the, the uh, commission feel about that?
This is Commissioner Hanson. It helps me, a- as long as we're alerting city council, like, like I personally, I want to vote against it because if the code says 15, then we need to follow that. And every time we don't follow that, it just chips away a, a problem we're going to have in the future. And if city council looks at that and decides they want to change that, that makes our job a lot easier. It's hard for me to go against what they've set as the standard in the city and the code, for whatever the reason is, that's what the code is. Um, it just makes it easier for me. So somehow that we give the city council a heads up, that's critical for me, however that gets there.
Well, and, and I, I would agree. I would, I would, I would request that as, as a minimum, that, that there is a uh, formal proposal to, to be different than what our current code allows. And probably some reasoning behind it.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I would, I would agree with that. That would be, that would be the minimum that I would, I would accept as well.
Yeah, in, in my eyes, it's how, how the city council is being alerted of this. If it's a written formal request, that's one thing. If it's a denial, that's another thing. And it's not that I hate the idea of the project, but there's a reason that code is there and it's above what I know to my knowledge right now. Even though everything we've talked about it, there's probably somebody else out there that has an- another four pages of information of why it's that way. And so, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, city councils obviously can be the ones that decide on this, but I want them absolutely to know that it's a concern for me as a commissioner that if you, if, if they're telling us 15 feet, I would like to stay at 15 feet. If there's a reason not to, then let's get it changed and, and, and somehow they need to be alerted to that. So that's where I'm at.
Okay.
So the oth- the other option then would be for us to table this and ask for them to provide the information we're talking about for the next meeting. So we've got two options, and I understand it. One would be to table it, one would be to change the uh, conditions for approval. And I don't look comfortable with that. I, I can't decide.
Well, I, and I, I can, yeah, I can, and you, you also have the, I mean, you also have, you have three options. You still have the same three options you always do. But those would probably be my preferred options and I, I would, I would assume that if we were leaning towards the third option, it would be denial based on this, I would assume that, that that the applicant would probably say, I would uh, request, if we can get this information to you to table it. So, so I assume that, yeah, you're probably right. Those are the two options that you, in reality, you have. Um, and I think we just need to move forward with one of them and, and see where the commission is. If uh, they're in favor of those, I think there's some, some heartache both ways. I think the applicant has, has acknowledged that he needed to formally submit it. Um, um, I feel, I do feel more comfortable with, with uh, with someone from, from, you know, Chief Evans coming on saying that, that, yeah, he's, you know, 10 feet isn't, isn't an issue, but it's, but it meets the code and it meets the, the fire code for him, which would be, would be the more of the concern. I think there's some validity in the, the these are maximum allowable paths, so you probably will end up maybe not with a full 15, but in some cases, but you'll probably end up in, and you might end up at 10 in some cases, but you'll have varying degrees of width there from 15 to 12 to 10 to to 18 in, in some places, depending on the, the home that goes there, so.
Yeah, I, I still feel uncomfortable just knowing what, what our our requirements are and what they put on the plan. knowing what, what our, our requirements are and what they put on the plans without any request for, uh, changing.
Uh-huh.
And that bothers me still. I'm, I, I guess what I would, I'll make a motion if you like.
Okay.
I motion, I'll make a motion that we table item Z dash twenty dash oh five, a request for rezoning of approximately thirty-three point oh seven acres located at approximately twenty-eight hundred east, uh, countyway for, from the current planned community development zoning to a proposed planned unit development residential, a PUDR zoning designation. Uh, and the reason for this table is to have, uh, the applicant uh, provide a request to change the ten-foot space, or ten-foot space between the properties. Let me rephrase that, to change from fifteen feet to ten feet between the properties and a re- that they request in writing a change from twenty feet to fifteen feet on the side street, uh, uh, what's the word I want to use?
Setback.
Setback, that's the word trying to come to my mind. Is there anything else we'd need to include in that?
No, not that I know of.
Are you comfortable with that, Drew?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that and, um, like I say, I think that, you know, for best for you, because like I say, you could just send it, I think, you know, that, that we'll probably have the discussion at the city council like this as well. Um, so yeah, the, you know, this way you're making it part of a recommendation and moving forward. Either way, it'll be fine. This way you'll get to see it the way you want to see it probably, so I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, that, that is my motion.
I, so we tabled it, did you give us a date? Did you say the next meeting?
Next meeting is what I intended, I'm sorry.
June third.
So June the third? So I have a motion from Commissioner Henry. And.
Second it.
Is that Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Musso. Um, in favor, Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo?
Um, aye.
And Commissioner Smith is an aye as well. Um, the motion is tabled. Uh, Bob, did you get that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, provide the information as soon as possible and, and just so I'm, I'm, we're very clear on, on what I am providing. I am providing, all the documents are, are going to continue with the application. I, I am only providing a letter that states that the setback request in this, in this application is the ten-foot separation in between units and the setback on the side units would go from, uh, twen- from, sorry, from twenty to fifteen and then ten to fifteen in between units. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, fifteen to ten. You, you said that.
Yeah, fifteen to ten.
Uh, and, and Bob, if, if you, you know, I'd probably give a rationale. You know, just don't keep it a single sentence, maybe if you guys can talk it over with your, uh, your landowner and just come up with at least a rationale to state between the planning commission and city council, why? You know, um, just, this is food for thought and to help the cause.
No problem. I appreciate that comment. Yep. Yeah, so I'm, I'm good. I understand the motion. I'm, I'm great. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so, uh, motion passed unanimously. Um, that is our meeting for tonight. Um, Drew, do you have anything else for commission? Any, any great announcements?
Um, no, I wish I did, but, uh, I, I, you know, I, there was a piece of property that went to Sitla last Friday, um, up at, um, by the, um, Black Bear Diner and the Maverick on the, on exit thirteen. And there was an auto mall, um, at least a contract, it's not for sure it's coming, but there, there was a, an awarding of that property to a, a out-of-state actually auto dealer as a possible auto mall for that, that area there. Now, we'll wait to see what happens. Um, but it's like anything when Sitla does that, they just award that time and they have, they have a shot clock now. Um, come back and have a proposal in, but, um, so we'll wait to see. I'm not sure what kind of cars. Um, I think, I think a, a local, the biggest local dealer down here put in Ford two, but came in second place. So, that's, that's the only news I probably have for you, if that's what you're kind of referencing, but that's like rumblings that are going through right now that I'm aware of, so.
Well, that's, that's good news. See, you do have good news to announce, huh?
Every once in a while.
Good information.
Yeah.
Quick question for Jason. When is Main Street supposed to be completed?
Do you think that I know the answer to that?
Brandon, I'm sorry, my bad.
You're fine.
Brandon.
I don't, I don't have a date on that. I do know that we, that the north half, um, I believe from four hundred up to Buena Vista, it might be even a little bit lower, has been paved. Um, they, they have also paved from the Buena Vista going up to Washington Parkway, uh, by just past Rio, that was paved today. Washington Parkway is almost complete. Um, so Main Street, there's still quite a bit of work going on, on the southern half of that. We're, we're still a little ways out on it. I can't give you a date because I truly don't know. Um, I just got a message on here from, uh, Councilman Ivy, says the completion date is set for July first. Uh, I, we do have a lot of work going on still right there in that area, as you, you all saw that, so.
Well, a great Fourth of July celebration on Main Street. Um, any, any other questions or comments? And if not, I would look for most to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Henry is moving to, uh, adjourn the meeting. Well, don't all jump in at once.
Oh, I'll second that.
Second, all in favor. I will vote on this, we're all in favor. Um, we can go home to our, our families, have a great evening. Um, and, uh, enjoy your evening and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, if not sooner. I'm just talking, you don't have to worry about me, Commissioner Musso. Okay, thanks.
Good night.
Good night.